I'd like to call this meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. Welcome and good evening. I entertain a motion regarding the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Any correspondence? That's a no, thank you. And now, we have our always the best part of the evening, our guests. Rachel, would you like to tell us who they are?
Thank you. Today, we have Mr. Eric Henrickson here from Longfellow Elementary School, along with several of his Lyons from Longfellow. And they are sharing with us their L-I-O-N newscast that is part of Results for Communications in Strategic Land. And Mr. Henrickson will introduce his crew.
Good evening, thanks for having us. We are really excited. I'm very proud of these kids behind us. This is actually a group of six that represents over a group of forty fifth graders. This is something they have a chance to do when they become fifth graders. And you're gonna see, because I don't want to talk very long, but I want you to show, we're gonna show a product that they put together. And then they're gonna talk a little bit about their roles in that, in that product. So if we could get the video.
Hi, welcome to the
L
I
O N
News.
Welcome back to the
L
I
O
N
News.
Welcome to the
L
I
O N
News.
Hi, I'm Benji.
I'm Riley. And this is my card to the veterans. It says, "Happy Veterans Day to you, veterans." Thank you, veterans, for everything you do for us. Okay, I have a song on the front. It's to the tune of "Happy Birthday." Happy Veterans Day to you, veterans. Happy Veterans Day to you, veterans. Happy Veterans Day to you, veterans. Happy Veterans Day to you. Hi, this is my card to the veterans. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you, veterans, for everything you do.
Hey, did you guys know that your hip is called a pelvis?
No.
Well, Mrs. Weisens class is learning about the skeleton.
Let's go learn about the skeleton.
(singing) Creamy and clavicle for talus and phalanges. For talus and phalanges. Creamy and clavicle for talus and phalanges. For talus and phalanges. And eyes and ears and hands and toes. Creamy and clavicle for talus and phalanges. For talus and phalanges.
May I help you?
Hi, I'm Becky, I'm here to drop off Grace's lunch.
All right, come on in, thank you.
That buzzer was really cool. I like how Longfellow keeps kids safe.
Hi, I'm Kennedy, and I'm here with
Chloe.
And
Aiden.
What are you guys doing?
Writing a story about Martin Luther King.
Do you want to read yours?
Mm-hmm. I have a dream. My dream is to make the world a better place.
If you were Martin Luther King, what would your dream be?
To make the world a better place.
To have everybody have an equal life.
Let's go see the cooking show.
Hi, welcome to the cooking show. I'm Addison.
And I'm Grace. Today, we are making tangled twists. Sugar and spice makes these chewy pretzels especially nice.
Today, we are going to make a healthy snack for the new year 2014. Now, we put an animal cracker. Aw, he's a little horsey.
And apple.
Now, you can put chopped up carrots or chopped up apples on the celery, just for decoration. Here is the finished product. Mmm. Enjoy. This is all-natural creamed honey from Mickey Candy's Grandma and Grandpa's farm.
It's the bees' honey.
Oh, God.
(singing) Celebrate good times, come on.
It's time to celebrate and have a good time.
Time to celebrate.
It's a celebration.
Let's celebrate.
Let's celebrate.
There's a party going.
I do not like green eggs in hand. I do not like them, same I am. I do not like them here or there. I do not like them anywhere. Not in our house, not in our house, not
What was the story about?
It was about a king who wanted, um, the sky to turn into ooblick.
How did you make the ooblick?
With glue and water.
What was your favorite part about the story?
When the magicians made the ooblick. When, um, the king couldn't sleep. When the king couldn't sleep.
Thank you, bye.
Remember to put the milk away appropriately, and don't make a mess for the janitors to clean up.
That's all for today, thanks for watching, though.
L
I
O
N
News.
Bye.
I'm, okay. Hi, I'm Alex Ugonov, I'm gonna, I'm the computer, a computer tech, but I also do music for the L-I-O-N news. We thank you very much for letting us have the show. I think all the students at Longfellow enjoy the news. I remember when I was younger and I wanted to watch it. I enjoy picking out music for the shows, for sending you know what the theme of the show is. So if it was ja- jazz, I'd most likely pick a jazzy piece of music. I love that my teacher has been helping us make this better. It can be fun, but it also can be challenging, and I like a challenge.
My name's Jessica Heel, and I'm doing mine on set designers. Set designer is one of the first things we do because it takes the longest, and the set designers want to do their best. This also involves teamwork. There are about three set designers on each team, that means everybody should be involved. Each of the set designers needs an idea. They always compromise. Once a month, the set designers will come in and work on it. They may, might even have to work on it on the set after school. Our set designers are creative and artistic, they're doing a wonderful job as set designers.
I'm Grace Dorser, and I'm one of the producers. As producers, we have to have our team on schedule and ready to film. We also help the camera, computer techs, set designers, and anchors get good ideas. We ask teachers what they want to have on the L-I-O-N news. Another big thing is time management, we need to make sure that we are always on time to film. This goes without saying, we need to make the show fresh and new every time there's a different show. One of the last things we do is make sure our communication with the computer tech is clear, so they don't make the show all wonky. Our producers are great at keeping schedule and knowing what they have to do next. We are so excited to be doing the L-I-O-N news.
My name's Ellie. Our camera crew is very careful with the cameras and microphones. The camera crew also has to get the right angle to see the people's faces and not the back of their heads. Our camera crew is becoming great camera people. Keep taking pride in the Lion News.
I'm Kim Katermas. We have awesome reporters on the Lion News. They think of very good questions to ask other kids. The reporters have to have exceptional communication skills and be able to work with teachers and kids. They have to be able to leave class anytime and get their homework done. Also, you need to be able to speak clearly and loudly, or else no one can hear you when the show airs. Reporters also have to be patient with littler kids when they forget what to say or start laughing. We have great reporters this year and are glad to have them on the news.
I'm doing my other one on anchors. We have excellent writers, anchors have to have good communication skills. We can't be shy in front of the camera. You have to be creative and you have to have expression. Our anchors are always on task and ready to do the job.
Hi, my name is Caleb, and I'm very grateful to tell you about computer techs. If you want to be a computer tech person, you have to be good at problem solving, because sometimes things go wrong and you have to figure out how to fix them. We have to download things and make decisions, so the best clips and shots get on the show. You have to stay calm when things go wrong, you can't freak out. When the kids don't talk loud enough, we need to get on the computer and help make their voices louder. It is fun watching all the videos that the anchors and camera people have worked really hard on. I have always been interested in computers and videos, so this is the perfect job for me.
Wow. Thank you very much for taking the time to come out and share with us. There's cookies on the side, and please help yourself on the way out. And I can tell you as one board member, we think you would be great interviewers. We'd be more than happy to come to you for an interview. So Yes, so, so keep that in mind going forward, that we'd be a captive audience. Thank you so much. Okay. Well, now we have an interesting part to our agenda, the canvassing of the election results. We have Deanne Buckhaus with us, who's gonna walk us through this. I think it'll be an interesting endeavor for all of us. But I'm gonna let Deanne take the floor and tell us what we're doing here. So go ahead, Deanne, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me. First thing I want to do is just kind of quickly go over, you know, what process we followed in getting the results that we have thus far. Each location tabulated their own election results on election night. All results were hand-counted. We had one of our vote center locations that also tallied the absentee ballots. And they were, they were counted separately from the election day ballot, so we could keep those results, you know, clean as well. What you'll be considering tonight is simply the absentee ballots that were either, one, rejected by the election board for whatever reason, and I'll go over the ones that they did reject here in a moment. The others are anything that was received election day or later that were still postmarked March tenth or earlier, okay? Any ballots that were received after the election that were postmarked the eleventh or later are not even considered. So we don't need to worry about those. So these are just, just ballots that had an acceptable postmark according to state law, okay? Does anybody have any questions about procedure before we get started? Okay. What I'm gonna do is I'll read, I'll point out what, what the first group is here, and then I'll pass them around. What we want you to do, or what, what the board needs to do, is simply look at each ballot. You're going to compare the signature on the ballot envelope with the signature on their ballot application. We're just ensuring that the same person who applied for the ballot is in fact the person who voted the ballot, okay? As long as you feel, you know, obviously, we're not handwriting experts. But if you feel, you know, reasonably certain that those are, are made by the same person, then at the end, we'll decide which of these, excuse me, which of these will be accepted and which will be rejected based on those comparison of signatures, okay? So these first, this first group is six ballots that were received after election day, but are postmarked March tenth or before. And, yeah, I'll Brock hand those out. And basically, each board member needs to, to take a look at each ballot. So you might want it Brock, you might want to start them all with the same person, sorry. And then they can pass them down. You've all been given a handout that has the list of all of the names of those six ballots. So as you're going through, if you want to mark on that sheet, you know, if you feel that that one can be accepted, and you can put an A beside it, or an R for reject, make it easier when we go around.
Yes. I thought that it was against the new voter ID law for voters to sign an affidavit.
The, the, um, the affidavit on the back of the absentee envelope is not the same as, right, the voter ID that was, yep, yep. Because they don't appear in person to provide thus with their ID, this is just another way for them to, it's them swearing that they are in fact residents of the precinct. They have lived there for thirty days, and they are qualified elector. This is always the part in canvassing that takes the longest, is everybody considering them. Okay. I think probably the easiest way to do this is to identify if there's any out of the six that you felt needed to be rejected based on the signatures.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna move to accept the
Second. Any discussion, I suppose? All those in favor of accepting the ballots, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Okay. Now I have two ballots in which the absentee board felt that the absentee applications did not match the absentee envelopes. And essentially, what happened is, and we, we see this quite frequently with absentees with husband and wives. The husband signs the wife's absentee ballot envelope, when they, they have a sticker on it. And so the wife signed the husband's, and the husband signed the wife's. But we do have their applications attached. And so my advice to you would be to, to consider, you know, whether or not, obviously, the person who signed the ballot envelope, regardless of the sticker that's on it, matches the signature on his application. And then we'll go from there. And I'm gonna take these little slips off, just to make things a little easier for you guys. And that's just those two.
Great. Jim?
Donna, I move that we accept the two ballots that were just presented on behalf of Connie and Eugene Nickless.
Second. Thank you, all the, Linda? I don't feel that Connie Yeah, actually, I agree with, with Linda. Do you just need a, um, a majority, or do you need a unanimous acceptance?
No, it can just be majority.
Okay.
Yep.
In that case, anybody else have anything they? All those in favor of accepting, please say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, say no? No? Did I, so it's four to three, so it passes then?
I will just, I'm gonna just quickly slip these open, and then I will let the board, or a couple members of the board. They're all accepted. And so basically, what we need to do, because it does need to be the board that, that takes care of this part, what we would ask, that you just simply separate the ballot envelopes from the security envelopes. When all of those are separated, then we will go ahead and open the security envelopes, take the ballots out, and then we can tally those. And the reason we, we separate them all, we separate the ballot envelopes from the secrecy envelopes first, is so that there's nothing to tie the vote to the voter. Just maintains the secrecy of that ballot. No, he can, yep, they, they should open those, yep. They should open them, and they should tally them, so. Yep, you can hang on to those. And Brock, the secrecy of envelopes can actually be thrown away, you don't need to keep those. Okay, so according to adding the eight votes in from canvassing, the final results, there's a total of 6,088 votes, 2,597 yes, and 3,491 no. And then I believe you have the abstract signatures former Ann Marie has, that you guys will need to sign. And that will become a, a part of the official record.
Okay. There's two copies, so you have to sign both copies as they come around.
And then I will email the, the official results spreadsheet. I'll update it back at the office with these results and email it to Brock.
Thank you.
So we have that for publication. Anybody have any questions on the process at all, or?
Okay. John here.
Madam President, I would, I have a motion I'd like to present to the board. I move that the Fargo School District invite Cass County to conduct the June primary and the November general election in any Fargo Public School buildings.
There a second?
I'll second it.
There any discussion? Um. I didn't have my microphone on. Is, I'm, I'm concerned that this was not on the agenda, and if we're gonna be discussing this. What's your parliamentary? I mean, it's connected to the election, so I guess that's the, but not this election. Yes, Paul?
And should it come under new business, or do we, or maybe we're
No, we're not technically, we're not, you know, actually, John, can you withdraw it for the time being? Because we're not at a business section.
Absolutely.
And we'll find out whether this is, you know, we'll, we'll move on. Because it, it should fall under our business section, so, if, if we go ahead. So, does anyone have any questions for Deanne about the canvassing that we just finished, or? Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely.
Helping us with this interesting process. And you don't have anything else that we need to do, or whatever. Okay, thank you very much. Now we're at the point in our agenda for recognition of the audience. There was no one who signed up prior to the beginning of the meeting. I see some I see some unfamiliar faces, so if there's anyone there who doesn't know our policy, who had intended to sign up to address the board, please say so now. Okay? Thank you. Staff reports. I guess David isn't here, so no FEA. And Brock, the bond sale, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, just a brief update. As you are aware, at our most recent meeting, we did award bids for the construction of a new elementary school. That bid award was over $15.6 million. And previously, we had awarded in segments the bids for the HVAC project for the six elementary schools. In grand total, the total cost of those capital projects is twenty, just over $26.6 million. And as you recall, we did approve the bond issuance for up to $27.3 million. And at this time, I'm just updating the board that we are proceeding with the bond sale, and that will be happening on April 8th. And we'll be proceeding with the issuance of bonds up to that total amount of $26.6 million, once we have all the final costs and dollars associated with that bond issuance. And again, that'll be happening on the 8th of April.
Thank you. Robin?
So, the protest period was over when?
Members of the board, Robin, I do not recall the exact date. I believe we did provide that resolution 7th of February. Ann Marie, do you recall when we did that?
Was this the 60-day protest period?
Yes. So, that protest period was up prior to the February meeting where we awarded that, and there were protests, as you recall. Also, as a reminder, we are doing these bond issues out of the building fund, and so, these will be building fund bonds and payment coming from the specified levy for the building fund.
Any other questions for Brock? Special election report. Ann Marie?
Thank you, board members at your tables. I provided you with a compiled report on all of the communications effort for the special election. If you remember, in January, I provided a report to you on all the things we were planning to do. So, this is a report for you, for your records, to show the things that were carried out in that special election. It was a combination effort between the Communications Committee and the Communications Department of the School District. So, that is just for your reading and for your files on the special election.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for Ann Marie? Chris?
Ann Marie, it turns out that, it appears that a lot of people in the public didn't realize that the board could only educate the public about the mill levy vote. We couldn't advocate or talk about potential implications of a yes or a no vote. Did you get very much feedback after the election that people didn't really realize what was happening? Or do you feel that we did a good job communicating the facts?
I think as a district and as board members, you stayed true to what you were supposed to do under law.
Anyone else question for Ann Marie? Okay, thank you, Ann Marie, and to your department for the hard work in this area. Other reports? Rachel? Bob?
Nothing at this time.
Brock?
Nothing further.
Ann Marie? Dr. Schatz?
Thank you, Donna.
Save me for last.
Save me for last. Tonight, I'd like to report to you that we have completed our process for selecting the principal who will open Ed Clapp School. We just did that today. And so, we're announcing tonight that Jennifer Schultheis, who has been our principal at Lincoln Elementary, will be the first principal at Ed Clapp Elementary School. We're pleased to report that to you tonight. And that will create an opening at Lincoln that we'll figure out what we're going to do with that in upcoming weeks here, along with our opening at McKinley, as we move forward with our hiring process for all of our staffing positions this spring. So, we think that she will do a terrific job, and very happy that she's going to help us with that project.
Thank you. Anything else?
And that's all I have to report tonight.
Okay. We are at the consent agenda. Robin?
I'm of approval the consent agenda is presented.
Anyone second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Yes?
I just have a question about... Bob might be able to answer. About how many English-language learners, students, do we have in the Fargo Public Schools? Do you have a way of estimating?
Approximately around 800.
Business. We are at the EL 14, the district calendar monitoring. We had all board members participate. Oh, I lied. Only seven, I was looking at last year, only seven board members. But everyone reported in compliance, so I would... Robin?
I'm of approval to accept the EL 14 district calendar assessment report as provided.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Accepted. Next item, ad hoc superintendent contract committee. As you know, around this time every year, we review the superintendent's contract. I would like to name Rick Steen, Linda Boyd, and Rusty Papacek to that committee, with Rusty being the chair. Just so that you know, I am not nominating two folks who aren't here, so that they don't know. They have given their okay to that, so I would appreciate a motion to that effect. Jim?
I move we accept the President's recommendation of having Rick, Rusty, and Linda serve as our ad hoc superintendent contract committee, with Rusty as chair.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Rusty will contact you when he returns to town. Oh, I beg your pardon, John.
Madam President, I move that the Fargo School District invite Cass County to conduct the June primary and the November general elections in any Fargo Public School buildings.
Okay. Are we okay with this being part of...
It is in the business section. It wasn't a topic to be discussed, but...
Linda?
I move to amend John's motion to ask governance to better his request and place it on.
That wasn't to...
That wasn't an amendment? Yeah. You actually have to change it, but you can, in the discussion, you could perhaps suggest that he withdraw it and not...
I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Jim?
Just from a parliamentary perspective, Robin, I think what you wanted to do is table this until governance can place it on an agenda.
Okay.
That is what Robin wanted to do.
And that would be Linda. But anyway, did you... So, Linda?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so do you want to do what...
I suggest that I would like to ask that we table this and have governance place it on a future agenda.
Okay. Now, do I need a second for a table? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, and to table, we just vote correct? So, all those in favor of tabling the motion until governance has a chance to put it on an agenda, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
I think we better have a count, sorry.
Myers?
Correctly.
Nelson?
No.
Strand? Walman? Boyd?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes. First time my vote actually counted.
I don't think it did, though.
It didn't.
I think that takes a two-thirds majority, doesn't it?
It does.
Oh, you're bursting my bubble. Bubble check.
Majority?
Oh.
Okay. Then, the motion is tabled until governance can discuss it. So, thank you. We are at committee and liaison reports. Robin, do you want to start?
Nothing to report.
Linda?
Nothing to report.
Chris?
I attended Frederick Narey Romana's funeral on Saturday, and I just wanted to share with everyone that he was clearly well-loved by his community, and he was a special boy. It was standing room only at the Red River Valley Church, and so, our prayers go out to that family, and very lovely and well-attended.
John?
Madam President, Rick Steen and I did our engagement at Woodrow the other day, and I suppose we should wait and discuss it when we...
Well, we'll put it on an agenda after... But you can give us your short version, like the rest of us did when we first went.
I would be really pleased to, you know, that facility, from one end to the other, is something everybody in our community should see, whether it's the preschooler kids with special needs, and the one-on-one attention, and in their new space, or the mothers of babies getting coached to get their degrees, or the alternative Woodrow Wilson School curriculum and the kids and everything, to the five, five levels of English-language learners, that, from the very most fundamental rudimentary level of learning English, to the more complex languages. And I, at the first group, we started at number five, and I walked in, and it's a rule, there's more diversity in that room than I saw my first 20 years in North Dakota. And so, I asked where, how many languages are reflected in this room? And there was like Farsi, some Bosnian languages, some Arabic languages, Portuguese, 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 and so on, the cultures. So, I asked each room where, how many languages there were. And we got down to the first level room, and the very most fun... And the lady teaching was trying to explain their school board members, and, you know, people there looking like, this is not translating. And I go hi, and it kind of translated. And David Berkman, the principal, said namaste. And I've never had a moment like this in my life, where instantly, everybody in the room, they lit up like light bulbs and glowed, pulled their hands up, bent down and bowed, and ever-so eloquently said namaste. It's something that are, what we're doing in our system for not just kids, but for people of all levels, and the services we're providing to people in our community. It's really, was an experience I just didn't expect. So, it was a great experience. Thank you.
So, I'm to understand that this was positive for you as well.
Very positive.
I think generally, that was the result, but we will let the... Did you want to...
Now that the engagements are completed, please forward your suggestions and recaps to the Communications Committee, and then, we will be meeting on those. And if you have any preferences or suggestions for next year, we'd be happy to start arranging those for the rest of the board. Thank you for completing those.
John, do you have, when is the next Health Insurance Committee meeting?
I believe it's the third Thursday, I believe. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but they did notify us ahead of time.
Anything else, John?
No, that's it, Madam President.
Jim?
Just two short things. GAC is meeting this Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning to kind of think through the next topics of engagement that we want to have with our local legislators, and get a recap on our first reach-out efforts, and any other GAC-related topics that come up. And a reminder, I know it's on Dinah's calendar, but we have a 10:30 engagement at Blue Stem tomorrow. This is one of GAC's projects for the year, in that we have invited the leadership from Morehead as well to be out there, and going to just have a brief, I think, opportunity to socialize after an exciting announcement about the summer events and activities. So, please try to be there, 10:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. I guess that's my turn now, President's report, which I will pass out. Jim's right, there are various dates on here, including tomorrow's. I have also included on here your graduation assignments, based on the way people requested. Everybody but one has one assignment, one has none. And just please, if something changes with your plans, and you're not able to make your assigned graduation, please let Ann Marie know right away, and we will shuffle. If for any reason, there's a problem of any other sort, just let me know. And otherwise, I think that's it for me. We have a several-week break now, because of the adjustment of our board meetings, so I hope everyone has a chance for a breather in the next few weeks. And those of us that are traveling to the National School Boards Convention, all received your packets on your table tonight, courtesy of Ann Marie. Thank you very much. Make sure you look through those quickly, early, so that if you have any questions about something in there, you can ask Ann Marie before the day before you leave for the trip. Anybody else with any other reports that was missed? Jim?
I just wanted to take a moment in time to congratulate all of our basketball programs that just completed a successful trip to state, which would be the South Boys, the Davies Girls, and the incredible Davies Boys, who brought home a state championship.
Yes. Hooray, hooray. Thank you. Our next meeting is April 8th. And anyone have anything for debriefing? John?
I do, Madam President. I... For some time now, we have an empty table where FEA is supposed to be. And over, and over, and over, I wonder, well, why aren't they here? And I guess, I as one board member, would encourage the representative of the Education Association to take and capitalize on the bridge and the communication benefits that can come from us sharing at the table where we sit as officials, and they as representatives. If they're not interested, I guess I'll say that perhaps, they should ask to be on the agenda when they're interested.
I don't know about David tonight, but he had something come up the last minute last meeting, and we knew that he wasn't going to be here. I think his interest is legitimate, but I will follow up with him.
Madam President, this is a pattern going back about a year. So, it's just my position. We set a table up here to have their voice here at the table. And they have assistant representatives, they have an entire group of people. I know in other communities, like, for example, Bismarck, they make sure their teachers are attending the school board members' meetings. And it's just my view, I've been wanting to say this for a long, long time. And we welcome them here.
Excuse me?
Set up a space for them, put them on the agenda, and we need that communication.
I will follow up.
Thank you.
And did you have a comment, Paul?
Well, I did. I understand where John is coming from, and this is not meant to be a criticism of the way we're doing things, but I think we should probably seek ways to get the teachers' representatives more involved with the meeting. I'm sure it's difficult, you know, to make a short report, and then not be very interactive. And maybe, just under the category of things we can look for in the future, we can find ways to get them more involved in some of our other committee meetings and other things that go on. That's not meant to be that we're shorting it now, I'm only saying that, you know, maybe we can look for ways to get them more involved, because I believe strongly, as I suspect many of the rest of us do too, that... many of the rest of us do too, that any feedback and input we can get from our teachers is among the best feedback and input we can get anywhere. And it's from our staff, and we're all on the same team. So just kind of supporting John's comment, but also trying to add a little depth to, you know, we need to get them more involved.
I will definitely follow up with David. Anyone else have anything for debriefing? Okay, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Have a good week.